All median with respect to budgets for 2021. Um, so I'll call the meeting to order. Everybody is here that needs to be here except for Rachel. So the first item on the agenda, but first, I guess we don't even have this on the agenda. They may have any communications or anything that they feel compelled to share. Hearing none, we'll go to new business. And I don't remember why this is on here. It's gone through a number of different places, but discussion and possible action regarding the funding of private led service line replacements completed by property owners in 2018. And I know this has gone through utilities, big finance as well, but go ahead. This is Jill's item or Damon?
I can touch on it. The only reason it's coming back was because that was the recommendation from Finance Committee. It originated out of Committee of the Whole at the, I think it was at the Rescue Plan. So, long story short, I think almost everybody was at the last American Rescue Plan workshop. And the utilities had had kind of an emergency request for funding, immediate funding to to get some of the commercial properties located downtown, some of the historic districts that weren't grant eligible to to basically have the Committee of the Whole approve American Rescue Plan funds to cover those costs. And it was approved. And then throughout that conversation, I believe it was Alder Jensen that just kind of asked about, well, what about the other folks that have replaced their left their private led services in the past, but aren't covered under this DNR grant? And the DNR grant will cover everybody being replaced in 21 as this this work continues. And then anybody that did it in 2020, and that's the cutoff. So he had mentioned, why don't we just run it through Utilities Committee and Finance to see how everybody feels about potentially going back and looking at 2019 for the homeowners that did their own private service to seek reimbursement, potentially through American Rescue Funds. So I went through utilities. The conversation held there, and this is a while ago, but I believe the memo is in there too. The Utilities Committee wasn't really on board with it for a number of reasons. The main reason being that it, first of all, it'd be hard to go back and look to find out exactly who did it. And it'd be, it'd certainly be an incomplete list because not the homeowners don't have to report when they're doing this. So the only way the utilities would know for certain if if somebody did this in 2019 was if the utilities did it as part of a bigger utilities project. But any homeowner that went through and just had their lead service replaced, they would have done that on their own, hired their own plumber. And the utilities really wouldn't know that that occurred. And then the other kind of question that came up was, well, you know, where where do you cut this off? You know, if you do it in 19, then what about the people in 18, 17, 16, and so on and so forth? And that was pretty much the same conversation that came up at Finance Committee. So both committees, Utilities and Finance, just basically decided, you know, well, we don't think we want to pursue this. And the recommendation that basically came from both of them was to bring it back to the Committee of the Whole, because that's where it originated from, to say that they don't feel comfortable moving this on. But certainly, it's it's backup discussion to have Committee Committee of the Whole take another whack at it. So, you know, for the folks that sit on Utilities or Finance, if I missed anything, you know, let me know. And and keep clue the group in on on the conversations that were held.
Lisa, did you want to make a comment?
Yeah, I just had one other thing, and I don't know that you touched on this. But I think the other thing that you mentioned about, you know, not knowing who had had the work done, but also whether or not those people still live there or if the house has been sold, and we thought that might get muddy as well, just trying to figure out who actually paid for it, if they're even in the home, and trying to track them down so that we we saw as another potential issue.
Greg?
Greg? Yeah, I'm, make sure I'm on my, okay. Yeah, I'm a bit disappointed. I understand what what they're saying. It was my understanding that we already knew that there was like five households. I don't understand where the confusion is coming from there. And the other thing too is most of these people already have their their documentation. I know one couple that just lives up the block from me here. They could turn that in tomorrow and, you know, to try and seek reimbursement. So I honestly don't see where this is going to be that big of a deal. All you would need to do is to just say, you know, if you've if you have done this on your own, bring your bring your document forward, and we could then make a decision whether you're eligible or not. I don't, if you don't want to go down that road, you know, okay, but I'm disappointed. I'm not going to.
And Greg, I think that the other.
I have a question. Regina?
Yeah. Put it to your hand. Go ahead.
You know, saying they didn't know who had had those lines replaced is is really not right, because if I remember correctly on this, it was the utility company that forced those those people to have their lines replaced because, not because of them, but because the utility company had their valves in places that they didn't like them for their inconvenience. So they moved them out. When they did that, they forced those residents to have their lines replaced. So, you know, to say that they didn't know who who those people were is really disingenuous. And I brought this up when this first happened, that I thought that it was unfair to those homeowners because of the fact that it was forced on them. They had no choice in that matter. They were threatened with shut off if they didn't do it. So absolutely, we should be going back to those to those six, those six residents and having in back paying for those. That was that was forced on by the utility company. That was not done because they wanted to on their own volition.
I guess I don't remember that at all. Is Jill on the line that she can speak to that? I don't remember that anybody was forced to it. I'm sorry, Tom. I guess.
You need to go back to the to the minutes of and and take a look at it, because that is exactly what's happened. The reason I know this is because two of them happened within a two block radius of me, to people that are my constituents that that came to me asking questions about it and to Greg also, and that's why Greg brought it up. Yeah. This is totally unfair on how they how it was handled. And I was upset with utilities then, and I'm still upset with them about how they handled handled it then.
Yeah, yeah, Tom is right. I remember when Tom brought this up, you know, I was I was not aware of it at that time. It came to my attention later. You know, so, yeah, I I think it may be a struggle for us, but I think that we need to we take me need to make that effort.
So I guess I, in light of this new information, which I did not know of prior, so I guess I would like to kick this back to Utilities to address those specific items that you address. I did not know that people were forced to get their lead lines replaced. I always thought it was optional. And so if that was the case that they were forced, that brings up a different scenario that I was not aware of. Unless, Damon or the mayor can enlighten me, I don't remember that at all.
Well, we can certainly go back and look. But, you know, the other thing is, you know, the council did approve the ordinance. And if we wouldn't have received the grant, everybody would have had to pay for their own. So, you know, it's really hard to go back, because you're not necessarily going to know all of them that did it. Yeah, you'll know a few, but a lot of them were done privately. And, you know, when you pass an ordinance or you change a law, it usually goes from that day forward. You don't go backwards. But we can certainly kick it back to the committee if that's the desire or the recommendation coming out of here.
That would be my request.
Then I guess that would suggest you make a motion to that effect and and, you know, take a vote and see where you want to go with it.
Okay, I would make a motion to resend this back to, I guess, Utilities first and then to Finance. And please make a little bit stronger effort in identifying the the parties involved in this and see if we can, if we can accomplish something here. So that would be my motion, but to send this back to committee.
Second.
Does Mayo, any other comments, edits, questions, discussion?
Sorry, I did not hear the motion. Could we say that again?
Yes, just to briefly summarize it, the motion is to send this item back to Public Works, choosing not Public Works, but to Utilities. Yeah, send this back to Utilities for reconsideration.
Greg, you're only talking about the people that were forced. I mean, maybe the better parameters is the people that were forced. You're, in your opinion, people that were forced in 2019 to have their lead lines replaced, not everybody.
Yeah, there were some of the, there were also some that that chose to. You know, I, to me, I can, I don't differentiate between the two myself, but that's, you know, that's up to the committee. If they wanted to differentiate, I guess that's that's their prerogative. But to me, it would be, I would like to try and cover everybody that that made that 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 effort.
Ben, did that satisfy your question?
Yes, thank you.
Any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries?
Thank you.
And thank you very for explaining why the reasoning behind it, adding catch up that first time that you.
If you want me to end that meeting, I would be happy to do so.
It's up to you.
Yep.
Moving on, let's go to the 2022 City of Stone Operating Budget Summary. Even, I think that's you.
Okay, Council President Hirsch, if you're okay with it, I'll just kind of work through the presentation and just allow anybody to speak up with questions, comments, concerns as we're going, if that works.
Absolutely. And can you put that your slide presentation on like presentation mode so it fills up more on the screen? That's possible. I don't know if it's possible with a PDF.
It'll work. I've learned that PDFs actually show a little bit better than PowerPoints sometimes.
Okay.
Just let me know if I'm small and you can't read it, and I can certainly inflate it for you. So I think everybody that's on on the call tonight, as far as I can tell, Rachel and Fred are the only ones not here unless Fred maybe just jumped on. But everybody here has been through this before, so it should look pretty similar. We tweaked a couple of the slides and added some additional information, but everything's pretty similar. And the process really hasn't changed as well. I guess just to give you a little background in terms of what we've been doing behind the scenes before we jump into this, you know, obviously, we lay out the the budget schedule in May. We really kind of kicked this off. You know, have the CIP information due in June, and then the operating budget information is due in July. As you all are probably well aware, we we worked through the the CIP process. That was approved by the CIP Budget Committee, I think, in September. So we wrapped that up. And then as we were working on that, we were also starting to pick up the operating budget and working through that. Mainly, you know, July, August, Finance Department works internally to kind of get the numbers in place, summarize all the information that the department heads have put in. The department has really focused on the nonlabor side of the costs. And then the Finance Department and Human Resources work together to kind of nail down the the labor cost, insurance, health insurance increases, cost of living adjustments, things like that. And then we have the meetings with the department heads in September. We did those a couple of weeks ago, kind of finalize everything, get their input. And then really, here we are at the Committee of the Whole. So this is the first of three scheduled. I think last year we got through it in two, so that's a good goal. Let's shoot for that. But tonight, I'll kind of go through the, I guess I'm calling it the Executive Budget Summary. And then we'll get into some of the department head budgets that were that are scheduled for tonight. And then the second batch will go on October 20th, which is next Wednesday, I believe. So that will kind of just jump into this. So again, the presentation schedule, what we're going through tonight, who's presenting on the 20th. And then we always kind of leave the the third meeting on the books to kind of go through any major changes that might be in the works. If anything's been just proposed tonight or at the October 20th meeting, and then we can always finalize the budget. Nothing is stopping the Committee of the Whole from finalizing it at the second meeting next week. And then this will go to the November 9th Council Meeting. So we'll actually be publishing the budget next Thursday. So if there's any changes after this meeting and next meeting, we always bring publish another sample or, I guess, condensed budget in the hub. But that the the one that you're seeing tonight is the one that's going to be published initially before the public hearing on the night. So again, kind of just going through some of the driving factors here. As of right now, we do have a placeholder of a 3.35 wage increase for union and non-union employees. We've worked with some area municipalities, just kind of bouncing back and forth with the little email group that I have. A lot of the the cost of living adjustments are ranging right around between 2 and 3%. But again, the far majority of those municipalities also have a wage matrix in place where people are stepping up on their anniversary and things like that. So 3.35% is not, it's not absorbent. I think the last DOR estimate that we're using for expenditure restraint was at 3%. The CPI index has really been going up and down all summer. I think we've seen numbers close to five, down to three. So it's been kind of all over the place at this point, but I think everybody's pretty well aware of that. Nothing's getting cheaper at this point. So right now, we do have the 3.35% wage increase put in there. Obviously, that's for the Committee of the Whole to decide on and finalize what they want to send to Council to finalize. I think the other night at Council, Director Gilliam went through the health insurance costs. We did see a 5% increase increase in health insurance premiums. Net new construction, we ended up with 1.32%. That results in about $100,000, $100,000 increase to the base tax levy. I do have a slide right after this. I'll kind of show you where we compare with, I guess, comparable municipalities within Dane County, or at least what I would call comparable. We did terminate TIF 3 officially last year. We collected the last remaining revenue this year, but we did actually get a $72,000 increase to the base tax levy with that termination as well. So that's one of the other hidden long-term benefits of TIFs. You do actually get a pretty good bump when you terminate those. We were able to add an additional $72,000 for all intents and purposes to our operating budget for that. The nonlabor operating budget increase you can see in the general fund is right around 0, 0%. I think it actually went down just slightly, but, you know, rounding numbers, we end up at 0%. One of the overarching objectives for us is to achieve a minimum impact to the mill rate and also attempt to create a five-year plan that's going to support the city's struggling TIF districts. I think we've been successful in doing that. That information is, it's looked at in detail at the CIP Budget Committee meetings. So the folks on that Budget Committee might be might be familiar with that. I think I do have a slide down below that touches on it a little bit. And then one of the things that Committee of the Whole will need to kind of discuss and and talk about, because what we're able to do in this budget is partly because we didn't actually budget a contingency amount. And one of the recommendations that came out after talking this summer about how we want to approach this and get some things done and help the expenditure restraint is to simply establish a policy governing this type of spending. The contingency budget is kind of a weird animal, because you're you're tying up expenditure budget with the intent of eating into your reserves, right? There's no offsetting revenue that covers this. It's always been past history to budget a revenue line item that matches your expenditure or your contingency expense budget. But that particular revenue line item doesn't actually exist. It was just plugged in there to balance the budget. So for all intents and purposes, the contingency budget was an amount that was earmarked to eat out of your your unassigned fund balance, right? In order to help our expenditure restrain a little bit and help our our bottom line a little bit and allow the city to do a little bit more this year, my recommendation would be just to establish a policy and show an actual reserved amount within our fund balance for what that contingency amount is established at. And it's really just comes down to an accounting thing, not really a budgeting thing. So if if the Committee of the Whole and the Council decide, you know what? We'd like to see $80,000 in contingency. We really just reserve that in our fund balance, because that's where it's coming from in the budget anyway. So that's one of the decisions that would need to be made by the Committee of the Whole as we work through this process. I'll keep going. If you need further explanation on that, certainly jump in, or you can ask me later when we kind of get down to the the last slides too, and we can talk a little bit more about it.
Damon, on that last item, are you planning on bringing that to Finance to kind of talk through that?
I would. It's not time sensitive in the overarching scheme of the budget, as long as the Committee of the Whole and Council is comfortable with going in that direction. I think it's worth taking some time on and not rushing through, you know, establishing a percentage, because then we would actually establish a contingency spending policy alongside of that. So at least that's the way I see this going and probably the best path forward to do this. You know, and and when you do it this way, so let's say we, in a given year, we budget $100,000 in contingency, but we only spend like $20,000. Well, you've now left $80,000 on the table that could have been in your operating budget, right? Whereas if you assign it in your fund balance and you set that amount at $100,000 with the intent of replenishing it every single year as you spend against it, if you have $100,000 in that fund balance account and you only spend 20, well, then the next year, you only have to increase it by 20, right? You're never really leaving money on the table. You're just earmarking money in your fund balance or your savings account, if you will, to cover contingent amount. And then we would follow the policy as requests come to Finance and Council. Does that, does that make sense, how that would work?
Yeah. May I also have any questions on that?
Yeah, just a quick comment, Regina. So those that are on the Personnel Committee might recall, we had a placeholder of 4% wage increase in there when we were having conversations. And what basically I did is I went through the staffing recommendations from our staff and looked at how the Personnel Committee prioritized some need positions. And based on that, we made an adjustment to try to fund a couple of part-time positions or in one case to make one hole and then to add an extra 20 hours in another department. And that's why we landed at the 3.35 instead of the 4%. So I just wanted to let the people on Personnel and then Staff that may have heard that 4% number floating around. And, you know, 3.35 doesn't really get us exactly where we want to go, but I think it certainly is is better than what we've been doing in recent years. And to be able to do that and take care of some additional needs because of capacities and departments, I think it was important goal going into this budget process.
Okay, anybody have any questions on that? All right, continue on, Damon.
Me to mess up. Okay, and this is the slide that I was referring to. And I know it's a little bit small, but you can kind of work your way down the bottom where we list this out. And what I listed was the 2020 net new construction percentages along with the 2021 net new construction percentages. And what net new construction does for us is that that's the percentage we're allowed to basically increase our tax levy, our operating tax levy, right? There's really no limit to the debt levy. But again, that really only comes into play on the the CIP side of things, the Capital Improvement Plan side of things. The net new construction is really what drives the increase in our tax levy to fund operations. So staffing, wage increases, nonlabor costs, things like that. And you can see where we stand just kind of in the comparable municipalities around Stoughton. I left Madison out here, and I left some of the smaller, smaller kind of communities. But kind of tried to grab a good sample of of the surrounding municipalities that are fairly similar to us. I guess I didn't leave it, leave out Madison that is included in there. But you can see where we stand, you know, big picture, I kind of pulled us out. We're we're basically second from last. We're kind of hanging in there with Manona at this point. You can see our 21 net new construction drop from 2020. But you can see that that the growth has just been a little bit slower than the the surrounding communities in in Dane County. I just wanted to at least give you the picture of of some of the struggles that we bump up against and potentially kind of why we're recommending things like creating a policy for contingency spending as opposed to budgeting and potentially leaving money on the table and things like that. I did want to get this out there so everybody could see a little bit of history in terms of of where these municipalities have been growing over the last couple of years. Again, it, sorry, go ahead, Matt.
I was just going to say, I think at previous meetings, I mentioned, you know, we're pretty close to the state average. But in Dane County, you know, I think the county grew at 13% or something. I mean, as far as, you know, the the population growth in that new construction in the county was over 2%. So we're kind of lagging in the county, but we're certainly pretty close to the state average when it comes to that new construction.
So again, if I'm going too fast or anything, just, you know, jump in with questions. Continuing on with the driving factors and outstanding information, you know, again, outstanding items. Finalize the cost of living wage increase. I don't even know if it's called cost of living anymore. AJ could probably correct us on that. I think there's a different term for it these days, but still old school. So we still call it the COLA. Again, the Committee of the Whole to decide on that, the final piece of it. Finalize the staffing requests that were approved by Personnel. I didn't put any of that into the presentation. I think we'll touch on that as we go through the individual department head budgets. I'm not sure if Alder Reeves or Mariswade, they want to touch on the process or not in terms of what happened at Personnel, or we can certainly just move on and and kind of touch on that in the department head budgets. I'm not not entirely sure what you would like to do with that. Any thoughts?
I could touch on it, and then if there's questions, you know, folks are welcome to ask. But it's the same process that we followed last year. And each department had, if they had a staffing request, brought it to, there were two evenings of presentations to the Personnel Committee, and they just shared information about their needs and the requested personnel that they were hoping to get. And, you know, essentially, we we just had to prioritize. So, and they had an opportunity to to share information, and we asked some questions. So it was pretty straightforward, but we felt that that was the best way. And I think that's why we started doing it last year, to give people equal opportunity to present and, you know, share information ahead of time, so there are no sort of making decisions on the fly. So I'm not sure if AJ's on the line and wanted to add, or Mayor Swadley or other members of Personnel, but we could answer questions as well.
Lisa, you're right on.
Yeah, and I would just add that, you know, not all the the requests that were brought forth to Personnel, obviously, we couldn't honor them all, but we did go through that process to prioritize them. And as I mentioned previously, that's how we, you know, ended up at that 3.35%. And the other thing I'd want the group to know is some of the requests that we weren't able to honor, department heads are still looking at, you know, possibly, you know, restructuring or consolidating. Department heads are still looking at, you know, possibly, you know, restructuring or consolidating positions in order to be able to achieve some of the staffing goals that they have. And those are things that will probably be completed after the budget process and would be up for consideration at that point. And, you know, some of the other items that Jamin has in here, some of the new hires, we don't necessarily know exactly. Maybe we do now, but maybe when he put this presentation together, we didn't know as far as what benefit packages they would be taking and things like that. And that kind of ups and flows as people come and go. But, you know, Jamin and and staff, you know, really go through the process to try to, you know, be as specific as they can when they go through. And you'll see that when we touch on the individual staffing and and budget requests.
Thank you. So the next one, confirm the final expenditure restraint restraint parameters. Just a little refresher on the expenditure restraint. You'll you'll hear me say ERP expenditure restraint program. That's probably what you're gonna hear me say from here on out. It's really a program by the state that will provide funding if we don't budget over a certain percentage. We do have the parameters. What makes me nervous is that they're really early this year, so I'm like worried about the DOR coming back and making a last minute change to it. I don't think that will happen. But again, I'm still holding out that there might be a change. I'm not expecting one. But because the information was provided so early, I just threw it in here as a potential outstanding item. We we generally don't receive that until pretty close to the third committee of the whole meeting historically, but they got it out pretty early this year. We do need to finalize the billing amounts to the townships. I generally don't consider that finalized until the budget is done because the townships do get a percentage of the operating budget. And we do use the population estimates. We did receive those, so we're good on that. So we can cross off the population estimates. We received those, I think, on Monday. So everything's been updated for that. Nothing actually changed. So once the expense budget is changed, if you're finalized, if there's no changes to the fire budget, then everything is good. And everything you see in your budget document will be the same. If there's changes to the fire budget, then we would have to update the revenue side as well that we build the townships. We are still waiting on the final statement of assessment from the DOR that will ultimately find out or determine the final mill rate. We do sometimes massage the debt service adjustments just to mitigate the impact on the mill rate. We do estimate what that's going to be to determine how much kind of excess debt service funds we'll use. That information comes late in the game. We, that's one of the other pieces that we generally get right before, I think, the second meeting generally. I know the DOR is working on them and they 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 kick them out in phases. This was the first week they're working on the final statement of assessment. So hopefully, we're one of the first ones to get it. I I think they do it alphabetically because we're always kind of late in the game. But once we get that, that's kind of the last piece of the mill rate puzzle. Confirm the final cost of the newly hired hired deputy clerk. That's really just benefits elections and I did receive that from HR. In a lot of instances, it's better to be lucky than good. I happen to have the same elections forecasted in here that she happened to elect. So nothing will change in the budget either. And then following the receipt of the October invoice, which we generally receive very quickly after after month end for transit. I'll I'll do some massaging on the final transit budget if I think we need to. That's the one that's funded mainly through the the state grant. We do budget a little bit higher on the expense side so we can maximize the grant. But I do also want to get it as close as possible. So if we get more information in a timely manner from the transit provider, I'll update the numbers and and see what that does, the budget at that point. So just some key twenty twenty two budgetary outcomes. You can see where I've put some historical analysis of of the mill rate. The blue is the assessed value and that's what your mill rate is actually calculated on. The equalized value is information we know early in the game and it's kind of a set number, a little more consistent to look at historically than the assessment. But again, the assessed value is what the actual mill rate is determined on and we're still estimating that at this point simply because we haven't received the final statement of assessment yet. But you can see where we're at. We're expecting about a three point four six percent reduction to the mill rate this year down to seven eighty two. And you can see what the five year average has been twenty sixteen to twenty twenty was about a negative one point two six percent decrease on average to the mill rate. Equalized value is down about three point eight seven. That should be percent, not dollar. I must have been getting tired while I was doing this. Down to seven seventy one and then the five year average is down about one point three three percent annually. But again, the assessed tax rate is what we want to keep our eye on. And once we get that finalized, I'll report that out at the the next committee of the whole meeting if it's available. But you can see we've been trending down and that's what the graph says. So it's a good direction to be heading and hopefully we can continue in that direction. This is completely an estimate on my part. The hard part about determining an impact on an average homeowner is that we don't really know how each individual homeowner is impacted by the assessment assessment. Some go up, some go down, some stay the same. And and it's kind of impossible to go through the couple thousand homes and look at how each individual is impacted. So I really just kind of took an average of, you know, what's the average value of an equalized home value and assessed value of a home value? And what does that kind of look like in terms of an overall tax change? So you can see here, the first bucket is the average home equalized value. That calculated out to two hundred forty eight thousand nine hundred and eighty nine dollars. And what that does is it results in about a two point zero seven percent increase in a tax payment to one thousand nine hundred and nineteen, and this is city only. But that's about a thirty nine dollar increase over the twenty twenty one levy. Now, where your actual taxes will be determined is with that assessed value, once we receive that statement of assessment. Right now, this is this is an estimate at this point. So I'm estimating that the average assessed value is going to be about two hundred forty seven thousand eight hundred ninety eight dollars. That's about a point seven three percent increase in the tax payment to nineteen thirty nine or about a fourteen dollar increase over twenty twenty. It's kind of counterintuitive because you see that reduction in the mill rate. Yeah, we see the taxes go up, but that's because we've seen that value go up so much. So we'll 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 see what the statement of assessment says and then I'll bring this back at the next presentation to see where we actually end up. Hopefully, we're we're close to this, so we'll keep our fingers crossed. But overall, if if the if my assessed value assumption works out and is close, you can see it's a pretty minimal increase to the average homeowner. But just like any year, there's winners and losers, just depending on how their assessment actually. Just a quick identity graph on the right hand side that just kind of shows the trend in our our general fund expenditures. This is all wages, benefits, non labor costs, as well as, well, this does not include the transfer amounts. So using the ERP formula, the general fund expenditures are increasing over twenty twenty one by about three point seven nine percent. And the five year average has been about a two point eight three percent increase annually. And we'll talk a little bit more about the ERP as we move on. I won't go through this in any amount of detail. The pie charts kind of paint the picture in terms of where the the majority of our revenues come from. And that that's the top pie chart. You can see about seventy three point five two percent of our budgeted revenues are coming from taxes. That's our property taxes. That's the pilot that the utilities pay. The Stoughton Housing Authority pays one. I believe Dane County Housing Authority pays one. So you can see the majority of our revenues come from taxes. And then the other big one is the seventeen percent, which is the intergovernmental government revenues, which is the state aids that we receive. The bottom pie chart is just general fund expenditures by classification. And you can see that wages and benefits make up about fifty percent of our overall cost. Debt service makes up about twenty four percent and then the rest is non labor and transfers. The condensed income statement on this side, you can see the twenty twenty two mayor's budget working our way down. Top section is revenue, bottom section is expenditures. I'll touch on where we're actually going to end up, bottom line. If you see this, this net revenues of expenditures of negative eighty seven thousand one forty six. The reason for that is 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 it's for audit purposes. The general fund itself is going to show a a budgeted net income of about twenty five thousand dollars. But when we do the audit itself, we roll in some other funds that the city has that are supported mainly a hundred percent by the general fund. And when we factor that in and look at how many retirements we're anticipating next year, we then show a a net loss. But again, that's overall for audit purposes. Where we want to clue in on is key in on right now is on the the general fund itself. So I I think I have another section. If I don't, I'll pull it up on my spreadsheet later to show you the difference between where the general fund is going to budget bottom line versus where we're going to show for audit purposes once we roll these other funds up. And I'll just pull that up in my spreadsheet after I get done with this piece of it. Back to the expenditure restraint impact, this just kind of breaks down where we're at in terms of revenue expense and how the the expenditure restraint is calculated. So you can see that very bottom green line there, we're at three point seven nine percent increase over last year. Again, the DOR, based on our calculation, we're allowed this three point eight percent, which is in the first column of numbers. So we left a buffer of about eight hundred and ninety nine dollars. So not much wiggle room there on the expenditure restraint. And I think our expenditure restraint is right around two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in terms of revenue that comes in if we meet this object, make meet this goal. So it's not a small dollar amount that that you want to forego it. It'd be pretty hard to replace two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in revenue, so we do try to hit this every year. Again, I'm not going to go through these in any amount of detail. I just kind of threw them in there for your own reading pleasure, just to show you kind of what a condensed revenue statement would look like. But bottom line for general fund, that's the first number, first column of numbers, the twenty two budget. We're at fourteen million eight forty. And you can see, I just kind of showed some trends here. The first first bucket of dollars is twenty nine actual, second one is twenty actual and then, you know, twenty one budget and twenty two budget. And I just kind of bucketed the different types of revenues that we have. So the green lines are are the taxes for the debt payments. The orange line is what we we issue in taxes for operations. And then we have some intergovernmental refuse and other, and you can see kind of where they've been trending. Obviously, all of them have generally been trending upwards over the last couple of years. This is the non labor summary. Again, it's it's a big ugly slide. But if you had a chance to look at things ahead of time, it'll at least give you an idea of what the non labor expenditures look like by department. And then the transfers below. But if you kind of throw the transfers out and just compare the the total non labor costs from legislative all the way down to planning, you can see that's where we end up with about that zero percent increase over last year's budget. This is the general fund wage benefits and insurance summary. So the top bucket of numbers is just more of a condensed statement of labor, benefits, health and dental. You can see about a three hundred thousand plus dollar increase in wages and benefits, obviously, a three point three five percent increase in wages. We added a couple of positions and then a five percent increase in health insurance, and that's why we're seeing the jump there. And then the the table below breaks it out in a little more detail. I'm not going to go through that in any amount of detail, but you can at least kind of see what buckets these costs are falling into. So again, some significant items for twenty twenty two. We did see an equalized value growth rate of of six point one one percent and our debt capacity will increase accordingly. The chart on the right kind of shows where we've been going over the last five years. So we did see a pretty significant jump in twenty twenty one. Health and dental insurance increase roughly sixty five thousand four hundred or six point three three percent. Obviously, you have the five percent increase in the premiums, plus we added a couple of positions. And then you always have shifts in elections or benefits elections and things like that. The overall payroll increase, which is salaries, wages, things like that, is two hundred forty six thousand eight hundred or four point seven four percent. You can see salaries and wages increased two hundred sixty eight thousand or roughly five point seven six percent. We did decrease the volunteer budget because we have not been hitting it over the last few years. And I worked with, we worked with Josh on that. And he was okay with the reduction, so we're seeing about a nine percent reduction in the volunteer budget line item. We're not reducing their pay. We're just reducing the budget item because we haven't been hitting that anywhere close. We did see a slight overtime increase of about forty five hundred dollars. And then a part time and seasonal wage decrease of about sixteen thousand dollars. And that should hopefully add up to the two hundred forty six thousand eight hundred dollar payroll increase that I have above. Payroll benefits increase was about thirty four thousand two hundred or four point two seven percent. Our debt service increase was one thirty one six two five or about three point eight percent increase. And then our operating transfer increase was up eighty thousand dollars or six point one two. The operating transfer transfers to the library, Opera House, debt service, not debt service, public safety building. There's a couple more built into that, but you can see the increase there. So overall, these were the major changes in expenditures. Just touching on the summary of policy for unassigned fund balance. You can see the city's city's policies to maintain between twenty and twenty five percent of the subsequent year's operating expenditure budget. I did put some recent compliance history there. You can see we've been growing our excess. We're we're up to twenty nine percent at last year's audit. Roughly five hundred sixty four thousand dollars over the twenty five percent ceiling at this point. And I just put a note down here that due to maintaining a conservative approach to the twenty one budget because we didn't really know where COVID was going to be. I think we were still in a pretty rocky place as we were going through this process last year. And then also the federal funding provided to the Opera House. I do anticipate this upwards trend to continue for the 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 twenty one calendar year. So again, the twenty two budget tentatively includes some use of unassigned fund balance to fund the plan twenty two, twenty twenty two employee retirements. I I had a bullet point here that I'm tentatively planning to bring a request to fund the technology fund for a hundred thousand dollars. We're going to see where we forecast out come December because another chunk that would come out of the unaside fund balance would be the contingency piece of it. So I think after after committee of the whole kind of works through this process and makes a decision on that, I might revisit that technology fund request and just see where we're at. So that one kind of hinges on the decision made for the contingency funding, so we'll we'll work through that process later. Again, the excess fund balance is sufficient enough to cover these costs without falling below the twenty five percent threshold. I think that's pretty evident up here when you see this five hundred sixty four thousand dollar excess. You know, and the Opera House has received additional funds since then, so we do anticipate this upward trend, upwards trend. So the fact that we're budgeting into unassigned fund balance a little bit doesn't concern me at all. We have plenty of room to do that and these are just kind of one time issues or one time expenditures that we're looking at. The city does have a relatively high debt burden and Moody's would look at consistent decreases in the unassigned fund balance. But again, we have plenty of room before we hit that twenty five percent threshold. So I don't really have any concerns with how we're planning to use unassigned fund balance at this point. And again, the city's policies to limit the use of unassigned fund balance to one time expenditures. Again, with the contingency policy, we would set that number, but also have a little bit more detailed policy to follow request to spend against that contingency amount. Debt service summary, the city's policies to remain below four percent of the city's equalized property value. The city will be at two point six five percent at the end of twenty twenty one. You can see by this graph here, the left is starting in twenty seventeen, works all the way right to twenty twenty one. See this uptick in eighteen and nineteen? And we've been working pretty hard the last couple of years to start knocking this down. So twenty twenty one will end up at two point six five percent. Plenty of room against the city's debt policy as well. Percentage of levy, the policy is to remain below forty percent of the total levy and forecast of twenty one levy is at thirty six percent of the levy at this point. So we're below the policy amount as well. Just acknowledgements, finance department staff, they don't get heavily involved in the budget, but they put up with me while I'm doing it. So I want to thank them. They pick up all the slack on the other side of things, especially on the the transactional side of things when I don't have time to do it. So I I just want to thank them. The department heads. Uh, when I don't have time to do it. So I I just want to thank them. Uh, the department heads, um, this really does take a ton of effort on their part. Um, they put all the non labor costs into uh, B S and A. Um, they work on the revenue side of things. Um, they answer all of my questions, no matter how annoying they are. Um, and they they take time to look at their information before we meet. Um, and they they do spend a lot of time to help out with this budget. I just want to thank them as well. Um, as well as the mayor, um, he puts a ton of effort into this as well and makes all the hard decisions that I don't want to make. Um, so I appreciate that. Um, and obviously you folks, um, we're all probably meeting now at this point, and we have a number more coming up. So I appreciate everybody taking the time to meet and show up. Um, and and ask questions and and get the get the best budget that we can. So I just want to thank everybody involved. Um, so overall, committee of the whole discussion, um, questions of staff, um, confirm the cost of living wage increase. Um, confirm the recommendations from the personnel committee. Have that conversation as we work through the process. Um, again, provide direction on whether or not to budget contingency spending or establish a formal policy and just reserve that fund balance amount. Um, and provide further direction or additional research, um, or information that you'd like to see at the next workshop, anything I missed, anything um, you may have follow up questions on, things like that. Um, so overall, that's um, that's the executive summary. Let me just pull up one thing that I thought I was going to pull up here. So. It was probably a little bit confusing when you first heard it, which was that bottom line. So let me blow this up quick. I'll go through this quickly. Um, so this is the general fund full income statement here, and this section is the revenues which you have in your presentation. Um, the labor benefits, health, dental, which you have in your presentation, and then we have the non labor expenditures, which we work our way down. So the that bottom line for the general fund, if we're only looking at general fund, which is our fund 100, which is the 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 big budget that everybody here cares about. You can see we're budgeting a net income of $25,854 right now. Um, where that negative $87,000 comes into where I mentioned on a previous slide is because we rolled these three funds into. Um, the final bottom line for audit purposes. Doesn't impact us budget wise. We've already reserved these amounts. So it's it it doesn't have a financial impact. It just shows on the bottom line during the audit. The biggest piece here that ends up being this negative $113,000 um, comes from fund 250. Fund 250 is our sick leave fund, and what we do is we fund that every single year to a certain amount. And when people retire and get their sick leave payout, that's where we pay it out of. Um, so even though we're showing a loss next year, it doesn't impact us from a cash flow standpoint, because we've been funding it at a certain level over the past few years. Where there's enough cash in this fund, we're just now going to start incurring expenditures. Um, so hopefully that makes sense. I know it's not the easiest thing to grasp. Um, it's something new I learned when I first started here in in 19. Um, but overall, the number we really want to focus on is this 25,854. Not so much this number, the 87,000, because again, we've been funding the sick leave fund. For to a certain amount every single year, and we have the cash there. We have the fund balance to cover it. But now we're going to start incurring expenditures in 2022. So we're going to see some pretty expensive retirements come out, come on the books. Um, but we we still have to show it, and we still roll that up for audit purposes. So um, does anybody have any questions on that? I know it's not the easiest thing to understand. Um, you know, I live and breathe these 35 different funds. So it's, you know, I get it, but I know it's kind of a hard thing to see for the first time. Does anybody have any questions on that and what that means? Okay.
Brad, did you have something or is that?
All right, that is all I really had for the executive summary. Um, I don't know if the mayor has anything he wants to add. Or if anybody has any questions.
I don't have anything to add at this point. I think the rest of it we'll discuss as we go through the individual presentations.
All right, I see your mic is on. Do you have a question?
No.
Okay. Somebody else have any questions? Okay, should we move forward? Is the first person on the list a senior center?
Yes, um, and again, council president Hirsch, if you're okay, I'll kind of, pretty similar to what we did last year, where I'll just go through the kind of high level. Um, analytics of of the individual budgets, and then the department heads are available for questions um, from the committee of the hall. If you're okay with that, we'll just kind of keep moving down the line and unless anybody has any specific questions or anything, if that works.
That sounds good.
Um, I'm going to. I'm going to see what my spreadsheet looks like, because it might show up a little bit better than. Um, a little bit bigger than the PDF will. So if if everybody's okay with it, that's what I'll use. Um, everything you're going to see tonight is in the exact same format. Um, so just kind of working left to right. Obviously, you have the account number. Um, the account description, and then the 2022 requested budget number. Um, I should note that the requested budget number does not include any of the staffing requests. Okay, this is just kind of the original. Where were we at the point in time that everybody put their information into B S and A? Um, and the staffing requests are not included in here. So I do want to make that clarification. So we have the 22 department requested budget. The 22 mayor budget, um, and then the 21 amended budget. So we really kind of want to focus heavily on these two columns that are next to each other. Um, we're required to put a year to date number in there. So I did this through August 31st as I was working through it. Um, and then there's just some historical information here for your reference. So I put 20 uh, 2020 and 2019 actual, I think, in the packet. I expanded these out for the presentation tonight to throw 18 as well, in case anybody wants to know. Um, so we have the three years actual and then the three years budget amounts, but we're really kind of focusing on, you know, these three columns here as we work through this. I know there's a lot of numbers that follow, um, but they're really there more for your reference than anything. Um, so with that, everything's set up the exact same way. So it should be pretty consistent as we work through this. So the first up is the senior center. Um, Director McGlynn is here to answer questions. She was the first one online, and she gets on meetings early. She was here at like quarter two. So appreciate that. Um, so again, I'll just kind of give you the high level, um, I guess, Cliff Notes, um, if they're still calling it that, of the budget, and then Cindy's here for for any questions. Um, so overall, we did see a salaries and wages increase of about 2.3, 2.23% this year, about $8,000, $8,100. Um, that's mainly due to, so we have 3.35% pay increase. So we're seeing a 2.23% increase for senior center, which is lower than the cost of living adjustment. Uh, but that's mainly due to um, some reduction in wages for two positions that were replaced during the year. Um, so that's why you're not quite seeing that 3.35% increase. Um, health insurance and dental went down about 3.61% or $3,800, give or take. Um, because there was a change in a benefit election for the the volunteer program coordinator that was um, replaced during the year. Um, I think it went from employee plus spouse and family dental um, to no no benefit election at all. So we did. Did see a little bit of decrease in in the the health insurance cost. Um, and then non labor, we did see you go up about 3.30%, uh, but in the scheme of dollars, that's about $2,900. Um, so overall, not a major impact on the budget. So you can see here, the 2022 mayor's budget increased roughly $7,000 over the 2021 amended budget. The charts down here, I'll walk you. Uh, the charts down here, I'll walk you through. They're all kind of set up the same as we work through this process. So the charts on the the left, if anybody likes it more visual. Kind of breaks out wages, benefits, health insurance in blue. Um, and then the non labor is in orange, and for each year I have, so 2019 actual over here versus how we shook off budget. 2020 actual versus budget, and then the 21 budget and 22 budget. Um, and you can see kind of working your way right to left in this one in 2019. We kind of missed the mark on um. The the non labor cost, we had actual cost of 119,000 versus 72,000. But then in 20, you can see we kind of got back in line. We worked hard on the budget. Um, the labor costs were at 493,507. We budgeted 493,599. So we were pretty much right on there. Um, and it kind of helps you to work your way to the 21 and 22 budgets to kind of see where things are trending, to see if there's any big flips, and there's really not. Everything's been fairly consistent from 20 uh, 20 actuals through the 2022 budget. Um, and then the charts on the right hand side that you'll see tonight are just rolling all all of the department's costs up. Um, and they're set up the same way where we have 2019 actual on the far right here, and then working left, you get into the 2019 budget. You can see a 2020 actual over to the 2020 budget. We're pretty much right on, and then you can see kind of where things have been trending um, since then. Um, so with that, that's the senior center budget. Um, it's not a challenging budget. Um, again, establishing the payroll based on, you know, the existing staff and existing benefits elections, and then um, Director McGlynn put in her. Um, non labor costs, and we kind of had that conversation um, at our internal meetings and and tweak them accordingly. Um, so with that, that's really all I have for the senior center, um, unless anybody has any questions for me or Cindy.
Yeah, I have a couple. I see, you know, between the mayor's budget and what is requested, there's some big changes, like the foundation grant. And building maintenance, uh, operating expenses, seems like there's a a lot of. Changes in there, and I was just wondering, like, with respect to operating expenses, are they able to meet their bills and everything if we cut it by? $2,500, and then I'm wondering why. Why the foundation grant was bumped up $10,000. Uh, I mean, there just seems to be a lot of major tweaks as opposed to minor tweaks.
So I'll kind of go through these one by one. Um, so the foundation grant, um, you can see where we were budgeted last year at at $19,000. Um, the year to date is at eight, at 83121 was at 11,800, and we've we've nailed this budget down. You can see there's been some kind of shifts and ups and lows over the last three years, but we feel good about where this budget was in 21 and where it's heading. Um, so if you kind of look at where we are at 83121 versus the 21 budget, that looks pretty reasonable. Um, the original amount put in was 5,000. I looked at it analytically, had the conversation with Cindy and the mayor and said, you know what, that's probably not enough. Um, we had a $19,000 budget in 2021, 5,000 probably isn't going to cut it. And even if we look at historical costs here. Um, just looking at 20 actual versus where we're at year to date, the average is 11,600. Um, so we knew 5,000 wasn't going to be enough. We thought, well, maybe 19,000 is too much, and that's where we kind of settled on the 15,000. Does that answer that one?
Yes, thanks.
Um, telephone again, we kind of, telephone's been a moving target, and because I think we changed it last year. Um, we have some history to go off of now at this point. Um, so we knew that one was probably heading a little bit high. You can see where where senior center was at year to date, 831 at $700. Um, $3,000 was probably too much. 1100 might not be enough. Um, so that's why we settled on the $2,000. It looked a little bit more reasonable in terms of where we think we're going to end up. Utilities, kind of the same story. You can see where we've been trending. So 2018, we're at 21,9. 2019, we're at 20,770. Um, 2020, we're down to 18,650, probably blip on the screen because they were closed part of the year. But we, all across the board, we've been seeing utilities trend down, and a lot of that has to do with the mix of what W P, what W P P I is doing. Um, especially the renewable mix. So we're seeing utilities trend down all all across the board. Um, so um, we we didn't think 21, we thought 21,000 was probably a little excessive, so we knocked it down to 19,5, based on the trends that we've been seeing the last few years. Um, building maintenance, originally $10,000 was put in, but you can see here what we've been averaging. So from 18 to 20, the average has been roughly $22,000 per year. In building maintenance over at the senior center. Um, year to date, 831, we're already up to 14,273. So we knew 10 probably wasn't going to be enough. Um, so that's how we we settled on the 20. We've been seeing roughly that average over the last few years. Um, these are hard to nail down in terms of what they are, because there are a lot of nickel and dime type costs, but they add up as the year goes on. Um, so that's why we bumped that one up from the request. Um, same kind of story on programs and publicity. You can see where we've been heading. Um, you know, the last three years, we've averaged roughly 2,200. Um, we've had minimal costs this year. Um, so seeing that we we haven't been approaching this budgeted at all. We agreed that that a reduction was probably the right thing to do at this point. Um, same thing on ad ads and publications. Um, we've never seen anything get to 2,500 in the last, you know, three plus years. Um, the last three full years, we've averaged roughly um. $1,900, so we thought $2,500 was sufficient. Admin costs originally had 500 budgeted, but you can see here across the board, um, we've never incurred anything in that account, so there's no reason to budget anything there. Um, and then operating to, um, same thing. Historically, we just haven't seen a a trend that would support a $13,000 request. We thought 10,500 was sufficient for that. So those are the changes we discussed. Does that answer your question?
Yes, I like that explanation. Then I I I understand it better than.
I would just add, you know, as we went through these individually, we wanted to be a little bit more aggressive, so we weren't leaving as much on the table. We want to be realistic. We tried to keep COVID in mind, too, because that certainly affected, you know, some of the numbers. We weren't able to travel and and do some things. And even with that, some of those conferences are now going to be held virtually, so there might be cost savings there. So, you know, we tried to take a variety of factors in, and before, you know, I kind of made final decisions, we, you know, we tried to communicate with the department heads to make sure they're comfortable with them. Um, you know, based on kind of the rationale that we just went through. So you'll see a lot of that as you go through this. Um, but, you know, the bottom line is, is we wanted to be able to not roll over as much money into the fund balance. So we could, you know, take care of some additional staffing requests. Um, and also, you know, have a compensation plan that really, you know, is better than it's been been the last few years, and our employees have been through a lot. Um, through COVID, and we're seeing not only with the city, but just in general, that, you know, recruiting and retaining staff right now is a real challenge. And, you know, AJ can tell you all about that. She's been really busy with that. So we're trying to do what we can to, you know, protect our investment in our people.
It seems reasonable. Does anybody have any other questions? Okay, Brad, I think we're all good. I see all that you put your mic back. We're getting a lot of feedback from your mic. All right, Damon, you can go on.
Okay, I believe the clerk department is next. Bring this up. Does this seem to look a little better than the PDFs? It's a little easier to play with, so.
Yes.
Okay, is Candy on? Yep, Candy's on. Okay, so this was Candy's first budget um, in the clerk position. So we we took it pretty easy on her. Um, but high level, um, wages, we saw about a 2.53% increase or roughly $3,600. Again, that's below the the 3.35 COLA that we mentioned earlier. Um, but the deputy clerk did come in at a lower wage um, than where Candy was when she was in that position. So that's why we're seeing that difference there. Um, health insurance increase, we saw about 51% increase. Um, you can see it here. So we went from 28,000. Uh, we went to 28,528 from 18,900. Um, but that's because Holly was carrying single benefits. Um, Candy's carrying employee plus spouse plus family dental, and then the person that just started in the new position is also carrying employee plus spouse. Um, and family dental. So that's why we see this um, significant increase in health and dental, even though the dollars aren't that much, the percentage is kind of overwhelming. Um, till you put it in perspective and 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 see that it's, I don't want to say it's only $9,500, but when you see an increase like 51%, you expect big, big dollars, but it it's just not the case. And this is this, this is the struggle with with benefits elections. Um, you know, we budget at a point in time, and people change elections during the year. People leave. They have single insurance and they come on and. They have single insurance and they come on and pull the full family package. So we do, we do the best we can with this. But you can see how it really does have an impact on the overall budget itself. Working our way down, we didn't really make any changes to the non-labor request because everything looked fairly consistent with where we've been heading over the past few years. If we just kind of pop down to the graphs, you can see where we've been, you know, historically, it looks like, you know, twenty-nine actual non-labor costs, which are the orange ones, you can see we're pretty well right on. Pretty close twenty-twenty actual to the twenty-twenty budget in actual, in, in non-labor costs. You can see twenty nineteen actual labor was one seventy versus the one eighty-seven we budgeted. We made some tweaks and adjustments in twenty twenty and you can see we ended up pretty well right on. Had actual labor costs of about a hundred seventy-six thousand dollars versus a budget of one seventy-five. If you look at the chart on the right, you can see again, kind of where we've lined up nineteen, we did have some fluctuations. Twenty twenty, had another, had another round of budget under our belts and made some tweaks and adjustments. So we ended up pretty close to where we needed to be, one ninety-four actual versus one ninety-eight. And then you can see the budget adjustments here, again, that the big jump from twenty-one to twenty-two really relates to just the jump in labor costs, labor and benefits. So mainly the, the health insurance. So again, nothing, nothing too much here on the clerk side of things in terms of changes outside of the benefits elections. But again, we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have on, on the specific department. Candy has one more after this. We can start with this one. Okay. The last one Candy has is the elections budget. I, I always assumed this one would be really easy, but it's just not because the, the budgets or the, the elections kind of fluctuate from year to year in terms of the number that we have in twenty twenty, put a wrinkle in everything. Especially when you look down at the chart here, you can see twenty twenty actual of almost fifty-four thousand dollars versus the forty-three thousand dollars we budgeted. And again, that was because of all the COVID precautions that we had to take. Most of that was offset through grants. But again, on the expenditure side, it still causes that blip in the analytics. But we really took the approach this year of looking at twenty eighteen, had the same number of elections that we're anticipating for twenty twenty-two. You know, have accounted for some inflation and things like that and what we've been seeing historically. So you can see we moved the budget to about thirty-seven thousand five hundred for the twenty twenty-two budget for the election. Any questions on that one? Okay, I think that's it for the clerks department then. Okay, next up, I believe we have public works. Brett is on the line. He has a number of them. We'll kind of hit hard on highway and streets. And maybe stop for questions on those and then we'll, we'll probably breeze through the, the rest of them till we get to the refuse fund. So we will go to highway and streets. So here is Brett's. And this is one of the bigger budgets that you'll see tonight. Couple of departments who have some longer budgets here. But overall, we did see wages go down slightly in the highway and street maintenance department. And that's mainly due to a restructure in how some of the work's going to be allocated throughout the year. It's getting a little bit heavier on the parks side and a little bit less on the highway and street maintenance side of things. They're both general fund. So there may be some, some areas where we're off between the departments. But in terms of the overall fund impact, they still end up in the same bottom line. So we're not overly concerned if we see some ups and flows and fluctuations there. But for budget purposes, purposes, we did see a slight decrease just due to the, the restructure that Brett's proposing in terms of where time is going to be spent and how some of the seasonal workers are going to be treated in terms of where their time's going to go. Benefits, we did see go down for the same exact reason. Overall, I guess the public works department wages are up four-point-zero-two percent, which makes sense based on the COLA adjustment and some other tweaks that were made throughout the year. But highway and streets went down, parks went up. Benefits again was the same way, went down in the streets and street maintenance department, but up in the parks department. But overall, we did see about a two-point-zero-seven percent increase in benefits for the public works department overall. Health insurance, we did see go up about six-point-seven percent here. We see it go up in the parks department as well, too. And we'll touch on that budget next. Total is up about nine-point-one-seven percent. And we did see, obviously, we have the five percent increase. The more employees you have taking benefits, that five percent increase really does impact you more. And we did see one shift in election from single to employee plus spouse for health insurance and family dental. So again, those benefit elections, when you see shifts like that, it does have a pretty significant impact on things. Overall, I think non-labor, we really left pretty static. There was some movements between cost categories, but the total didn't really change. I think it's up point-six-three percent or two thousand dollars. I, I think maybe I'll stop there, see if anybody has any specific questions for Brett on any of the non-labor costs, if they saw anything and that they want to discuss with him in more detail.
Jim, I just have a comment real quick before you, before the committee asks questions, if I may. Sure. You'll notice the, the tree purchases, streets, you know, we, we have thirty-seven thousand here, the mayor's budget's twenty-two. That's a little bit deceiving because the balance of that is actually developer-related. So our tree planting number actually went up from twenty thousand to twenty-two thousand. However, we put the developer revenue amounts into a separate account for this new year. So that's why that, there's such a disparity in the requested budget versus the mayor's budget.
Yeah, what we did with that was, and that's a good point, Brett. We're eating up again budget and more importantly, expenditure restraint with basically what I see as a balance sheet item. If a deposit, if a, if a developer comes in and gives you money, you know, we shouldn't show that as a revenue and an expenditure. We should show that as first the liability on our balance sheet, right? Because we owe this work to the developer. And then when Brett goes in and gets the trees in, then we just basically spend out of that balance sheet. So we're still tracking it, we're still spending the money, but we were able to knock that twelve thousand dollars off to, to the balance sheet and get a little bit more room on the expenditure restraint. So that's why we did it this way.
Thanks for that, Brett. I don't want anyone to think I'm against trees.
Yeah, yeah, we actually increased the, the budget on that one.
Yeah, I was beginning to think that, you know.
I have a question. Yeah. Are we anticipating any sort of increase in vehicle fuel expense? Given the.
Yeah, you can see that on the, the park side, but yes, we are.
Okay. But we have the same amount budgeted in twenty twenty-two as for twenty twenty-one?
That, that's in the streets. So the increase is in, in parks. Years, yeah, years past, we were, we were in good shape, a little bit below for the, on the street side. So we're going to be okay this year, I think. But the park side, we did increase it substantially.
Okay.
I have a, I have a question and a comment at the same time. Jamin alluded in the very beginning that utility costs were going down on every, on all departments. However, if you're watching the news at all, they're talking about some pretty large increases in heating costs this year coming up. I'm wondering if you're taking any of that into effect?
Yeah, our utilities have been pretty healthy the last few years. We are somewhat insulated because of our energy efficiencies in our buildings. However, we've been below our, our ask for a number of years. And so we, we feel comfortable, we're, we're going to be okay.
Okay, and this is for Jamin. Jamin, I know that the public works building is new and it does have great efficiencies. However, some of the other buildings that we have do not, such as the senior center, which we just went through, and that didn't go up as far as I can remember with its budget request. And I'm wondering if you took that into account?
Well, I, all I took into account was the trends that we've been seeing.
And the trends you've been seeing have not been going up for you in, in energy?
Not in the last three years, no.
Wow, because I just paid propane bills and it jumped up thirty cents for, per pound. But hey, okay.
Well, I think what we're finding, what we're finding is like when we do replacements, like we approved the other night at the senior center. You know, we're trying to get to higher efficiency systems. And, you know, some of them that wore out were less than ninety percent. And once we put it in, are up to ninety-six percent. So I think that as we're making decisions in the CIP, I think we're making decisions that are helping with our usage.
And, and I'll, I'll speak for the public works building, too. We're, you know, we're having in there for about two and a half, well, almost three years. And we're just starting to get the, the systems really dialed in. So we, you feel comfortable that we're running pretty efficient right now.
Good point, Tom. But I think, like you said, Mayor, that we are trying to do more efficient replacements. So hopefully that will keep our energy expenses as we kind of budget it. So fingers crossed. Anybody else have any questions, concerns? Tom, are you okay with that?
I'm fine with it.
It's gonna be interesting when we come back to it.
Well, hopefully it all works out. All right.
Yeah, and you know, these are, these are the recommendations. That's why we bring it to the workshop. So if there are any recommendations that you want to make in terms of increasing or changing or moving this, that, or the other thing, you know, certainly we're, we're all ears. If you, if you'd like us to go back and do a little more research on what the trends have been for utilities, we can, we can do that, too. So we're, we're all ears. You know, it's, it's hard when you have, you know, one or two people kind of trying to go through thirty-plus different funds and, and not miss something. So, you know, again, if, if whatever, we're, we're up to whatever suggestions the committee, the whole has, and we'd be happy to, to do some further research, so.
Yeah, and I. I was just asking, asking if you were aware of the trend that things are going up, that's all.
Yeah, and I get that, Tom, because it was just on the news today that, it was in the paper that you can expect your heating bills to increase this winter. So I get that. So I don't know if we feel comfortable with these numbers or if we should, you know, have a little bit more padding due to those, you know, predictions. Maybe not with, you know, public works because it's so important for the most part, but maybe like some of the other buildings.
I think it behooves us to look at, you know, what the projected trends are for this year in particular. I don't, maybe the last three years aren't indicative of what's going to happen potentially this year. I think we've all heard on the news, like you mentioned, that there's a potential for a large spike in, in heating costs, which should be mostly gas for us. So I, we can certainly take a look from the public work side. I'm sure Jamin on the other buildings, too, what that could be if we added five or 10 percent, just to be safe somewhere in there.
I think in the looking forward portion of it, too, not only should we look at reverse trends as far as utility cost goes, but maybe even dig into the, the financial markets a little bit and see what, what, you know, like oil and gas futures are doing, like out six months, 12 months futures. That might be enlightening also.
So do we have like a recommendation for Jamin? Brett, do you want to make a recommendation or Tom? Or then to look, you know, maybe talk to some of our utility suppliers and see what, what, I mean, not, you know, still utility says and do natural gas, but for the heating, is that alliant or we energies to see what they're predicting for the summer or for the winter or for the next year?
I was just going to look up on what any of those futures are for a minute. I can come back to it, but I'll look a couple of them up.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else have any other comments, suggestions? We'll come back to this, Jamin, okay?
All right. Anything else on highway and streets or should we move on to parks?
I think you can move on to parks.
So again, this kind of falls under the, the public works umbrella. So we did see the wages go up in the parks for, you know, keep in mind on the highway and street maintenance side of things, we did see them decrease a little bit. Benefits are up as well, to be expected when you see the decrease on the highway and, and street side of things. And then health insurance is up as well, too, which follows that trend with the change in elections plus the five percent increase in overall costs. So we did see kind of the increase in wages and labors on the park side of things and then the decrease on the, the highway and street side of things. Non-labor costs, you can see we did go up about eleven-point-five percent, eleven-point-six percent. And this is where we did see the jump in vehicle fuel. So we went from forty-two hundred last year and bumped that up to about eight thousand dollars this year based on what we've been seeing. So not as many line items in the parks, but kind of followed the opposite trend on the highway and streets in terms of labor and things like that. Then we did, did see the bump in the vehicle fuel side as, as well. And we did see about a five thousand dollar jump in operating expenses.
And with that operating expenses, we, we added more into, as you guys know, we have a prairie cast force to devote some maintenance dollars into our, our prairies, also our downtown plantings. So that's where some of that increase came from in the operating side. Which also counts for the maintenance on some of the roundabouts that we're going to be getting next year. All that has to do with, with the, the maintenance of our, within our parks.
So maybe any questions? Quiet bunch, must be all understanding this. All right, Jamin, you can continue on.
Okay, Brett has a few more kind of small ones and then we'll jump into refus. I will, I'll probably go through these pretty quickly, but again, just holler at me if, if you have any questions. So the first one we'll go through is snow removal. You can see we've, this, this is a hard one. I, I think Brett will tell you that, too. It, it's pretty consistent in terms of changes, it's low dollar amounts, but we did bump this a little bit in twenty twenty-two up to seventy thousand dollars. Again, we've seen some pretty wet snowy years, the last couple of years. So I think Brett felt that a two thousand dollar increase was needed. And I, I tend to agree. And again, in terms of the overall scheme of things, a two thousand dollar increase, I think, makes sense at this point in time. But Brett, do you have anything you want to add on this one?
Yeah, a lot of these increases has to do with the, the cost of our salt. It's basically about eighty-two dollars per ton. However, I will mention we're using less salt, but it's costing more. Through calibration and some of the, the trainings and practices that we have in place, we're actually putting less salt down. But it's costing us more to, to get it. So that's where some of that small increase in the grand scheme of things come, comes into play.
Brett, are you still using the brine first?
So, so we, we use our brine on the truck. So we pre-wet the salt to reduce the scatter. And also. And also when the salt's wet, it does activate quicker. So we do use brine. We get about eight thousand gallons a year of brine from the county. So we don't have to make it in-house, which would, you know, if you had a brine making machine, it'd be a hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty thousand dollars to have that equipment on hand. So we do get that from the county for about fifty six cents a gallon. So we're, we're in good shape with that partnership. And yes, we do use the brine on the truck.
Just a quick one, Brett, are we adding more, more mileage to our, to our service area?
Absolutely. No, as as we add development into the city, we are certainly adding road miles. You know, KPW will be coming online probably for next winter as that development gets built out. We're keeping an eye on on all that in our our staffing levels, of course, in our service delivery is a big deal during a storm event. So as development happens, we need to to follow suit. So we definitely keep our pulse on a pulse or finger on the pulse of of development and how we can maintain our our service levels.
Thanks, Brett. Anybody else have any questions? Seeing none onward.
All right, signs and markings. Again, no change to the budget this year. We we see some ups and downs in this, but again, Brett kind of throws this budget number in there. So if there's anything he'd like to add.
Yeah, this, this is just to maintain our our sign inventory, order safety signs for our our staff. I mean, we do follow the the trends on this one. We talked with Deck who was our supplier. There may be some some minor increases. However, we're in pretty good shape with our sign inventory right now. We're, we're seeking grants all the time for things like the delighted solar crossings, you know, working with PD on on those. So we're, we're relatively good shape when it comes to to our signs. The 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 challenge, although, is when we do have a sign that gets hit. If they, we can't find the the person that that caused the damage, then essentially we have to eat that cost. And those do ebb and flow, and they also do follow the the winter weather. So as we have more snow events, we do have more signs that potentially get hit and damaged. So we don't always recover those those costs, but sometimes we do. Let's say about sixty or seventy percent of the time we we get those costs back, but you know, thirty to to forty percent of the time we we don't, we just have to eat those costs.
Any other questions?
All right. So the next one is street lighting. You can see we've reduced this one. This one has been trending down. And I think because everything is LED at this point in time. So we've seen this cost going down. You can see we've gone from one twenty seven to one oh nine to ninety three, still left a little bit of a buffer to cover this. So we we moved it from the one eighteen to the one oh five, which I think should be plenty based on what we've been seeing out of the electric utility. Anything you want to add, Brett?
Yeah, this is really just a success story and not only for us, but still utilities, because all the the streetlights other than downtown are are maintained by stone utilities. They do change those heads over to LEDs. We're probably mostly LED now in the city, and and that's paying dividends over the long run, not only from our energy consumption, but also from a cost standpoint.
Brett, how many do you suspect that still need to be changed to LED in the city?
Yeah, I'll I'll talk to Jill about that. The ones that we own and maintain, we have, we have virtually none. That's the downtown area. But citywide, I'll I'll talk to Jill and and get that from her, but I I don't want to guess either, but I'm thinking it's it's pretty a high percentage of of the entire inventory. Oh, I can ask her.
That'd be great.
Brett, do you know how long, how the durability of those LED lights have been since like the earlier ones have been installed?
Yeah, so the the what downtown, I can speak to to those. We have a ten year warranty on those lights. So we've had a few that had to get changed out. That could just be from the manufacturer. I think there was two out of seventy two. So that's, that's not too bad. And that's probably just a manufacturer's issue. And so those were replaced essentially for free. And so our our maintenance has gone down to almost nothing because we don't have to maintain those lights because they do have a ten year warranty, which was a fantastic deal for the city. So we're, we're in really good shape with with our LEDs downtown. Again, I can't speak to to what Sony utilities has going on as far as the maintenance on those lights or or the efficacy on those.
Definitely good to hear. I can do one update. I was looking at the the natural gas futures. I got a looking at a chart of it, looking back over the last five years of it, the the actual trend was downward over that entire five year span. But in about the last, say, six months-ish, it's definitely had a pretty marked uptick on that, and that's projected to go into January and February, obviously, the cold months coming in. But I mean, it's, it's a little bit more than, or definitely more than it has been over past winters. So I mean, it it might be prudent to maybe take one more look at maybe padding those heating budgets a little bit for the less efficient buildings anyway. As as Tom was alluding to and brought up.
Thanks, Brett, for doing your quick research on all that.
Yep.
So what that said, Jamie, how difficult would that be just to add like the, by the least efficient buildings that we have, city buildings, a little bit with the utilities?
Well, I think the first step would be to find out how much money we've been leaving on the table every year and see if that gap would potentially cover. I mean, we've seen some reductions in utilities that it's not material. So I'd probably look at that first, and then I'd probably have to have a conversation with Rodney or somebody to identify the the most, I guess, least energy efficient buildings that would maybe fall in the general fund, so we can have that conversation. If we do, if we do start padding this, and I'm not saying it's right or wrong, right, might be a good idea. If it does show that we we haven't been leaving that much on the table and we're seeing trends go up or anticipated to go up. So if we do see a jump in this budget, then something will have to go down. So just want to let you know that. And generally, the the place that that, the only place that I, I guess, I feel comfortable, I think, in in terms of the the position we've taken on this and how we we approach this budget is probably on the the wage side of things. So that's where I would probably have to pull from. So, but we can, we can certainly dig into it and see what it looks like, and then just bring back that information to the meeting next week.
Yeah, and like, you said earlier, one of probably the least efficient buildings might have been the senior center, and now we're getting to new broilers in there that are going to be ninety six percent efficient. So that might actually be some major cost savings for that building at least.
Yeah, we, I might find that we've like just been over budgeting this by such a large amount that even reductions that we have proposed in here might still leave enough of a padding. But we can pull all that information together and and bring it to the next meeting. Can't guarantee it will get out with the packet tomorrow, but at some point, we, you know, we can either try to amend it or just, you know, look at it on the fly next Wednesday when we get it available.
Oh, that'd be great. Thank you.
Yeah, and you could, you could see the challenge of putting the budgets together, especially within the the spending caps, because you know, it's all based on net new construction, which has nothing to do with cost of living increases. So it's really not a good system, but, you know, any chance I get with our state officials, I try to remind them of that, but you know, sometimes it falls on deaf ears. Sometimes you're preaching to the choir. But we'll continue to, you know, communicate that any chance we get, because this is a great example of of where the system is flawed.
Yeah, maybe we need to partner with some of the other municipalities, I think. Grafton, if I know, is actually landlocked, and so they can't have any new net new construction, and so they're really hurting. So they're moving, you know, building up as opposed to out. So maybe we need to partner with some other municipalities to have a stronger voice. Any other questions, concerns? Okay, Jamie, thanks. Keep rolling.
Cemetery, again, nothing, nothing changed here from the twenty twenty one budget. I I guess I'll just leave it up to Brett to kind of comment on how these operations have been running.
Yeah, we're, we're lucky on this when we locked in a three year contract with Homacher to maintain our our cemeteries. And so we're, we're pretty insulated from any potential labor or fuel increases that they may incur. So we're, we're in good shape right now with with the cemetery to not increase any costs there.
All right, and this is Brett's last one. Oh, sorry, Regina.
Nope, I was just saying, go ahead.
And the refuse fund. So this was new in twenty. This was the one that we pulled out to kind of start saving some expenditure restraint room and everything and just created a separate fund. This, most of this is contractual. This is with John's. I'll note the increase and then let Brett jump in and kind of explain the the situation with that. But at this point, John's has increased their fees or proposed to increase their fees about six percent this year. And what that does to the annual rate to a homeowner is last year was one eighty, this year we're proposing one ninety to cover that cost. And I'll let Brett kind of jump in and and talk about the specific situation there.
Yeah, so contractually, they have the ability to increase their rates by the the CPI, the consumer, consumer price index for the Midwest region. That actually was six point zero three percent, and I believe they increased to six point zero one percent. So we are underneath that consumer price index limit. And so I spoke with them about this because typically it's been about two to three percent. And a lot of their issues is is labor, just like anybody else. And so their increases are on the trash side when it comes to to labor costs and recruitment and retention. And that was basically what he had to say is that they cannot hire people without adequately compensating them. And then also retaining their veteran staff has been increasingly tough for them. So I think we're seeing that in in many different entities, many different work environments. And so we're, we're, as a consumer, we're feeling the the pinch on that one. And they're well within their contract limit, which is is important.
Yeah, and I would just add, you know, I believe that Verona is switching vendors because they've had difficulty with one that they're getting service from. It's not John's. And my own personal experience, I have an extra set of dumpsters behind our business right now because the contractor, the vendor we were working with, we terminated the contract and and switched actually to John's. And the previous contractor, it's been over a month and they haven't picked up their dumpsters yet. So it's a real challenge out there, not just for us, but for for our vendors to be able to provide service. And, you know, I think that John's has done an exceptional job for for our residents.
And also keep in mind that, you know, we, with this increase, it'd be about fifteen dollars and eighty three cents per month per residents, and a portion of that fee is also for e-waste and bulk collection. So we're, we're at about thirteen dollars and ninety cents for trash recycling, which is very competitive in the area. So just, just keep that in mind, too.
Any other comments, questions? Now, thanks, Brett and Jamie.
One other thing I'll add is that in the the mailings with the taxes this year, we did purchase magnets that'll be going out to each resident. Then we'll have listed on there our curbside collection dates and also the the bulky item information on who to call, which is John's for a collection. So that's part of those, those dollars within this budget that goes to pay for for things like that.
All right, quite a bunch. I guess we can move on, Jamie.
So next up, we have the law enforcement budget. I'll touch on my high level notes. Will that kind of chief jump in and add any commentary that he wants? But overall, we saw wages jump about three point three percent, which is pretty much right in line with the COLA adjustment. Health insurance and dental, we saw go up four point nine four percent, which again is right in line with that five percent that we were anticipating on on insurance costs. And then we saw benefits go about three point seven eight percent overall. And then nonlabor, you can see barely moved at all, up about point five one percent at this point, pretty negligible dollar amount. I think if you kind of work your way down to the charts, you can see that I guess, in total, shrink that a little bit, that's pretty good, isn't it? You know, in total, we've, we've been beating the budget or I guess, outperforming the the budget in terms of actuality. So again, we've kind of continued to to trim down the budget a little bit to kind of catch up and and make things fall in line. But in the overall scheme of a three million dollar budget, when you start looking at, you know, thirty, forty thousand dollar variances between actual and budget, it's actually pretty close. And that's historically where the police department has been running. So that's why the nonlabor costs were held pretty static, and then we just accounted for the the wage increases and the the health insurance increases. So it's a large budget, but it's actually a fairly easy budget to put together in terms of wages and everything. And and Chief and Lieutenant Conlin do a nice job on the nonlabor costs. But I'll let him jump in and and add any commentary that he wishes.
Can you hear me? I've been having some audio difficulties. Am I on?
Yes, you are.
Yeah, I just wanted to add that it's a pretty static budget in comparison to last year. You'll notice some areas where outside services and then uniform allowance, the 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 differences there were as a result of we're potentially looking at at least of four resignations within the next twelve months. And then we were looking at making sure we had a budgeted enough money for recruitment, initial uniform issues, things like that. And so that's where those are, and and we're going to kind of try to ride that out and see how how it goes. But otherwise, it's a very static budget to 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 last year.
Great, thanks, Greg. So may have any questions? Ideas, suggestions? Seeing none or hearing none? Guess we can move on. Thank you, Greg.
Thanks, Greg. We have library. Okay, so library, they're their own fund. So it looks a little different than the general fund budgets that you've been seeing. I will just kind of touch on the high level analytics here. Jim Ramsey certainly knows his budget much better than I do. So I'll just, I'll just touch high level. And then he can certainly speak to the specifics of his budget. First line I'll kind of highlight here is this transfer in from general fund. You can see at 2021, we were at 632, 350. This year, the mayor's proposing 646, 350. So about a $14,000 jump there. Overall, we're seeing about a 5% increase in library wages. So we have the cost of living adjustment, but then there were some kind of offsetting wage increases that the library board has decided that they wanted to see as well, too. And that affects a few full-time positions, if you will, and the shelters and the subs as well. Health insurance increase, we did see go up about 11% or about $10,000. Again, we did see a shift from none to single. And then the 5% increase on top of that. So you can see how those benefits elections really add up even with the changes in elections there. Benefits are up about 3.4%, about $2,500. And non-labor stayed pretty much static. I think we saw a 0.22% increase in the overall budget. So we're looking at a total increase in the budget of about 4.57%. I'll kind of work my way down to the bottom here, again, kind of focusing on this column that I have highlighted here. You can see we are, we are budgeting a loss for the library at this point in time. But they do have a fund balance at this point in time that can handle this sort of budgeted loss. I think last year going in, we were at about a $35,000 fund balance. And I think we're anticipating this year to end at around, I mean, to be conservative, maybe a $70,000 fund balance. And most of that has to do with the COVID issues that we've seen down there. Obviously, they were closed for a big chunk of 2020. We continue to budget 21 as if things will be open because that's about the only thing we could do. We did see them close for early in the year into the spring. So we've seen some savings on that side of things. So we are anticipating an overall fund balance at the end of 21 of about $70,000. So they are being asked to start spending down against that fund balance a little bit in 2022. So those are the high points, but I will, I'll let Jim jump in and, and speak to any specifics that he would like.
Yeah, thanks, Jamin. This, this budget is really unusual, as Jamin mentioned, because of the fund balance. I, I should just, not to quibble with semantics, but our building was mostly inaccessible during, during the pandemic during 2020 and 2021, but we, we definitely were not closed. We, we still did allow people into the building to use technology by appointment during the worst part of the pandemic. And we continue to provide curbside service throughout the pandemic. As you know, as I hope you know, now we are more or less back to normal. The only thing we're not doing is large indoor events. And we hoped to, well, obviously, continue into 2022 and 2022 being our first normal year in a couple of years. So that savings that we saw from the pandemic, most of that was related to, of course, having the building mostly closed to the public. We did see some staff savings from this year. Earlier this year, we lost two supervisors who left. And so we had those positions vacant for a while. That, that is going to contribute to that fund balance. And I, I, you know, have, have no problem spending down fund balance. In fact, it's perfectly reasonable and justified to use that. My only concern, which I expressed to the mayor and, and to Jamin, and then I'll just share with you all here, is that obviously when you're contributing a large amount of fund balance into the budget, especially year after year, you know, like we may for the, for this year and next year, when that is depleted, then it, it makes, you know, you either have to ask for a larger contribution from the city or, you know, we have to make cuts. So did, that, that's my only concern with the fund balance, just, you know, realizing that obviously, had we had our choice, we wouldn't have accrued such a, such a fund balance. And we are, we are dedicated to spending it down. We have several projects in 2022 that we would normally ask for capital money for, but we, we have plans, tentative plans to use some fund balance on that. So does anybody have any questions?
And I would just add that, you know, this was an opportunity for us to, to use some of the funds to fill some needs. So we, we wanted to do that. And Jim was gracious, gracious enough to, to work with us on the funding request. You know, the other thing that's unique about the library is, you know, under state statute 43, you know, the library board does have some authority as far as how they actually spend the money that's approved. And, you know, you know, they may take a look at that as, as we get into the new year. You know, and specifically, I'm not sure what that'll be. I know the board was meeting tonight, but you know, certainly, you know, we want to be able to continue to support the library and, and, and having a healthy fund balance, you know, we might as well tap into that. We, we hope that it doesn't grow because that means that, you know, COVID is, is still impacting the services that they're trying to deliver. But it really doesn't benefit us just sitting there. So I appreciate the flexibility, Jim.
Yeah, absolutely. And I mean, the, the, I, the city, the council and the mayor have been, have been very supportive of the library. Certainly since I've been here, but just looking at the past, you know, in terms of the transfer from the general fund and, and we appreciate it. Just to give you an idea, I won't go too into the weeds here, but about 70% of our revenue comes from the city in the form of the transfer from the general fund. About 25 to 27% comes from the county. And I was just in front of all you all a couple nights ago, talking about the county library tax. But the county also reimburses every library in the county for the services provided to residents of other municipalities. And Dane County's formula for determining those fees paid to each library each year is both more complicated and more generous than any other county in Wisconsin. So we get, long story short, we get reimbursements if somebody comes, somebody who lives in McFarland uses our library. Somebody who lives in, say Pleasant Springs, who, you know, that doesn't have a library, when they use our library, that's all factored into the, the fees that we receive every year from Dane County. And the reason I mention this is because one of the other things that's on my radar in this kind of, this is kind of part and parcel of my concerns with the, using a large portion of fund balance is we're probably going to see a reduction in our reimbursements from the county in 2023. The county decided to throw 2020 out in terms of the, using the circulation statistics from that year to determine the, the fees paid to libraries. But they are going to factor in 2021. Now, of course, every library in Dane County will be in the same boat. But we do expect that once 2021 is factored into that calculation and it's averaged with, it's a three-year average. So it'd be 2021, 2019, and 2018. Once those 2021 numbers, which were lower, are factored in, we probably will see a reduction in the fees from the county. So that's another thing that I kind of have my eye on. And that together with, you know, using a large portion of the fund balance to balance the budget, I just want to make sure that we're not setting ourselves up for, you know, in a year or two, having to come back and say, boy, wow, we really need a, you know, big, big increase from the city this year to, to make the budget. So that's all. I, I don't, not expecting any like action or, you know, I don't have a, a solution necessarily, but that's just, that is the way it is. And I just kind of want to go on record with that concern. But I have no doubt that the, the city will continue to support the library.
And the other thing, the other thing that Jim and Jamin and I did, we kind of did an exercise just to see, you know, what the city's contribution is compared to other municipalities in Dane County. And I think it's safe to say we're probably in the middle of the pack.
Yeah, in terms of, if you look at, the mayor's referring to, there's a slide that Jamin has that is the actual appropriation or transfer from the general fund compared to the minimum. And that bare minimum is what's established by the county. And that's what I talked to you about the other night. That is the absolute rock bottom minimum that a municipality has to fund its library at. If they don't, they have to pay the county library tax, which coincidentally is that exact amount. Because the idea being that if, if a municipality is not supporting or paying for library services for its own citizens, then the county is, is picking up the slack. So that, that minimum, yeah, Stoughton is, like the mayor said, right about in the, in the middle, in the middle of the pack in terms of, of that, about 130% of the, of the appropriation. I think, or that's what the 2022 one is about 132. It's down a little bit from the previous year, but that's, you know, because we're using the, the, the fund balance.
Thanks, Jim, for that explanation. And I was, that was actually one of my questions with using the the fund balance, are we setting you guys up for, you know, a default later on, you know, kicking the can down the way? But I don't know what, you know, if Jamin has any ideas about pushing that. So in two years' time, when that fund balance is used up, we're not looking at a huge increase from the library?
Well, I, I mean, I can't say for sure that in two years, that fund balance will be used up, but you know, it's hard to say right now.
We hope.
This seems like a reasonable amount to dig into based on a forecasted 70 to 80,000 dollar fund balance. Forecasted at 21, obviously. You know, it's certainly, the cities intend to support the library and fund it and not dig it into a hole. But, you, you know, I, I guess the hard question is, and I can't answer that, is, is when, when do you start requiring spending against that fund balance? You know, do we, do, if the committee wants to wait another year, that's certainly your prerogative. And then see if some things do come to fruition in terms of Dane County funding and things like that. So that is certainly an option. It's, it's, it's a tough call. Nobody has a crystal ball, so.
No, I, I get, I get it. So I was just trying to pose that question and see if anybody else, any other council members have ideas or thoughts? Concerns?
Yeah, the only other thing I was thinking is if we wanted to establish some sort of a policy on where we want to be as far as that percentage that we support above the minimum. And, you know, I'm not sure if that's a council policy or if that's a library board policy, but that's something that we can maybe follow up on. You know, once we get through the budget process.
Yeah, I mean, I would have some concerns, I guess, about, or just want to talk through about locking that number in or that, that percentage in. Yeah, obviously, you know, I, we, we never intended to, to run a fund balance like this. The, the pandemic, in a lot of ways, the pandemic, there, there were a lot of, we had to radically shift our operations during the pandemic, as I know a lot of other departments did. But for us, there were certain parts that were more, you know, at once more labor intensive. But also, of course, we saw significant savings from not having to staff three service desks, you know, and be open almost 70 hours a week, like we are under normal circumstances. And we also saw savings in utilities and to a lesser extent, travel and things like that. But those are, most of it was, was savings from personnel costs because we at the library, we, I mean, our, our big need, you know, is, is of course personnel and, and staff. But we use what we call substitutes to cover a lot of our desk shifts. That's, you know, if people are sick or on vacation and, or, you know, doing programming or unable to cover the desk, we have a pool of about four or five people who can come in and cover those desks. And we, we used a lot fewer of them in 2020 because of our, our service points and our, our service. Our services just changed so radically. But, but anyway, yeah, I, the library board, the full library board hasn't looked at this yet. I presented it to the library board's finance committee last night. You know, I shared my concerns and we talked through them. You know, we didn't really have any, any definite answers. But I will, the full library board will be looking at this next week. Unfortunately, it's the same night as the workshop, the committee of the whole workshop number two. But, so it's on the 20th. But yeah, I, I, I don't object to using fund balance, certainly. And I do have some ideas for, there, there's several projects that we've had in mind for some time that would normally be sort of capital type projects related especially to our children's area that, that we could certainly spend fund balance on. I, I've talked to the mayor and Jamin about that going into the new year.
Does anybody else have any comments? Wow, everybody's so quiet tonight. Hey, Jamin.
Okay, thanks, Jim.
Wait, Greg, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I did. I think we're being very quiet because Jamin's early explanation of the wage increase percentage, 334, and the benefits. And the graphs are great. So I think it's actually pretty easy to understand.
Thanks, Fred.
Sure.
Okay, we're at our last department, and that is AJ's. Let me get to her. She has, she has a couple in here. We'll, we'll do the big one first. Sorry for my scrolling. My spreadsheet's big. Okay, so here is human resources and risk management. So overall, in terms of salaries and wages, we did see about a 16% increase. That's obviously the COLA adjustment. And then one of the staffing requests that was approved. At Personnel was a, a part-time administrative position within that. So that's why you're seeing a large jump there. Health insurance is only, is going up 4.66%. And that basically follows the line with the 5% increase. For some of these smaller departments, when you see, you know, like two employees and the benefits haven't changed, and it should just be a straight line 5% increase. The reason that we're not seeing that, so like for HR, for instance, where you're only seeing a 4.66% increase in health insurance, not a 5% because dental's rolled into this as well, too. And, and we don't have an increase in dentals. That's why you're seeing a little, some of these smaller variances between that 5% and maybe somebody coming in at like 4.6% at this point. So that's why that's happening there. Benefits are up 8.04%. Again, that's just following along with, with the new employee in the position. That one isn't quite following suit at the 16% wage increase because this physician won't qualify for, for WRS. So that's the overall wage and benefit increase, which basically takes up most of the budget increase here. Non-labor, we actually reduced about 17%, but in the scheme of things, it's about $2,800. The graphs kind of paint a, a pretty decent picture of, you know, why we did what we did and where you see the big jumps. So obviously, this first blue line is the 2022 labor, health insurance benefits. And you see that big uptick from the 21 budget, just based on the new position and then the cost of living adjustments and health insurance and everything. But in terms of non-labor and kind of why we, we looked at these a little bit closer this year, you can see in 2019, we had 9,800 actual, $32,000 budgeted. We did some work in 20. We came in 11,000 actual and ended up with a $17,700 budget. So we've just continually kind of been tweaking these down to get more in line with what we've seen historically in terms of trends. Overall, this budget has been good in actual, you know, 19, we had some, some variance here, but then 20, we made the big adjustment to the non-labor costs. And we ended up with 186 actual versus 191. So I think this budget's in a pretty good place for 2022. So I think this budget's in a pretty good place for 2022. But again, the big jump here is the the new position. And if AJ wants to add anything on that, she's certainly welcome.
Jamin, I really don't have anything. You did an excellent job describing what has changed.
Jamin, I have one question. You you mentioned that one employee isn't eligible for WRS. Can you explain that? They just half time or below half time, or why wouldn't they be eligible for that?
So they're at the they're at the 50% mark, which is 20 hours per week. And I believe that shakes out to 2040. And the when WRS kicks in, it's it's over 1199. So they're underneath that that threshold.
Wait, 20, could you explain the 2040? I'm sorry.
Okay, so this person will be part-time. So in an average year, if I said 2040, I apologize, I meant 2080. This position will be half time. So they're coming in at 1040, 1,040 hours. And WRS does not kick in until somebody works 1,200 hours. So they're underneath that 1,200, 1,200 hour threshold for WRS, and that's why they're not eligible for it.
Anybody else?
Follow-up question on that, Jamin. The 1040, that's this calendar year. Is that a cumulative number so that when they hit 1,200 next year, they would become eligible?
Nope, it's a calendar year number.
Okay.
So it's 1,200 annually that they would have to work for WRS to kick into. And that's why sometimes we have to be careful with with different departments. You know, sometimes in the clerks department, when you look at 2020 with all the elections we had and some of the front desk staff were working these elections and putting in extra hours, we had to monitor it very, very carefully to make sure they didn't cross that WRS threshold because yeah, okay, the city takes a hit and then has to pay into the system. But at the same time, you have to go back to the employee and say, oh, by the way, you now owe 6.75% of your wages into the system. And, you know, people don't really budget that kind of money to do that. So so we're we we watch it pretty carefully.
All righty.
Any other questions?
Jean, you do. Hey, Jean.
I I've had bad connectivity if I keep my camera off. I hope you can hear me. I've had bad connectivity. Jamin, are there other positions besides the one of the assistant at the library that run into the problem we've just been talking about?
Like the WRS issue?
Yeah, you know, the benefit thing, the is that how how much of a problem is that? We discussed it at Lincoln Library. I'm just kind of wondering what what other parts of the city might be experiencing that issue?
I really, granted, my tenure year has been three years, but I've really only seen it at the elections last year. Because 2020 was just a crazy year, and it was very labor intensive on the the election side of things. That's the only place I've seen it. I imagine AJ has some thoughts on it, and she does, yes.
Yeah, I've seen it. We actually have an employee who works was supposed to be working less than 1,200 at the fire station initially, and then that position bumped up because they did step in beyond the 1,200 hours. So then that position the next year was bumped up so that they not only received that, but then they were considered three-quarter time. So we've had, we've had history with this. It happens especially at the front desk and any other positions where they're budgeted at that less than full time, less than 30 hours, less than 1,200 hours. There's many different categories that we need to watch for and monitor, Jean.
Thank you, AJ.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Are you none? We can move on. You're muted, Jamin.
Sorry, I'm working on two computers here. So this is other general government. I'll touch base on this line I have highlighted here, this miscellaneous expenses. What this is, is the city was loaned money once upon a time to come to compliance with the WRS side of things in terms of funding the program. They were loaned the money from the utilities, and this line basically represents the repayment back. I think we only have two or three more years left on this payment schedule. But that's what the big line represents. The other line here that has been a topic of conversation internally between myself, the mayor, and AJ is this self-insured loss. Now, maybe some of you remember once upon a time when the city was self-insured, right? And this line actually kind of made a difference and mattered. Right now, what this line has typically been used for in the kind of last three, four years has been to cover the deductible that the city may may or may not incur, right? And we've been seeing this, and I guess the graph kind of paints the picture better than anything. So it'll kind of work right to left here. So 2018 actual. And then you see that big budget number. 2019 actual of 74,000, and then you see that big budget number again in 19. We looked at this closer in 20 and made some tweaks. The 2020 actual was still at 58,165. And we had 2020 budget of 88,000. Same thing in 2020, 21, we we left the budget pretty well static. But as you can see through 2021, we haven't hit that number. So internally, we had some conversations and said, is this a line item worth budgeting? Would you budget an insurance deductible at home? Or would you use your savings accounts to cover that? And we kind of came to the determination that we know it'll never exceed $35,000. We're comfortable with where the unassigned fund balances are, as you saw on the slide earlier, that the city can certainly stomach a $35,000 deductible if it happens. And as you can see from the history, it rarely happens. So even if we just take the three-year history, we've averaged about $8,800 out of that. So this is you know, this is the this was kind of a decision internally to free up some funds to do some other things in the budget. So you can see we knocked that down from $35,000 to zero for 2022. But again, I think the graph kind of paints the picture in terms of historical costs, what we've generally seen here and just, you know, theoretically, does it make sense to continue budgeting a deductible cost or not? Or is that something we just decide we're going to rely on our savings account to cover? So any questions on that one?
Well, with our insurance, what is our deductible? I mean, the city has to pay for it or the individuals have to pay for it?
The city would.
So our employees, is this for health insurance? I'm trying to figure out what the self-insured losses, this all benefits, they don't pay their own deductibles?
The self-insured line is a little misleading. I'll let AJ kind of speak to the specifics of what deductibles might fall under there, but it's certainly not employee-related. It might be related to, you know, property laws, property damage, auto damage, things like that. But AJ can certainly shed some light on that, too.
Jamin, you hit it right on the head. Those are our out-of-pocket deductibles for our insurance for the city, not the insurance that's tied to any coverage for the employee, with the exception of workers' compensation for our employees and volunteers. So if we have a car accident, we have a deductible that we have to pay. If we have a loss on a building, we have a deductible we have to pay.
Yep, I get it. I was just when you said self-insured losses, I was because it was right under the employee benefits. I was a long night. I was blinking the two of them.
Not a problem. Glad that you asked for clarification.
So again, this is this, so I just kind of wanted to point it out that we made this decision internally and wanted to get it out there in case anybody had any strong feelings about it.
I don't have any strong feelings. Does anybody else have any strong feelings? Lisa, you have your mic, Ed?
Yeah, just a question, and maybe you just haven't gotten to this yet. Did you tell us what the miscellaneous expenses are? And I was not understanding, or we just haven't gotten there yet?
Yeah, so Yep, what that is, is a number of years ago, the city was required to basically come into compliance with the WRS funding. And at that point in time, this was before my time, but I'm assuming it was right during the recession era. The city didn't have quite as deep a pockets as the utilities did. So the city borrowed money from the utilities to basically make themselves whole within the WRS system. And this is just the annual payment that the city has to pay back. I think we only have two or three years left on this.
Thank you. Anybody else? None? Anything else, Jamin, that you need to cover tonight?
Last one, and this is another AJ one. So AJ does a nice job with this, kind of getting the policies lined up and and figuring out what the overall costs are going to be. And I think if this year, we we have a pretty good handle on where we're going to end up. You'll see some kind of shifts between the requested and what the 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 mayor's budget ended up being. But again, that was we agreed to that based on what we actually saw the policy prices come back. Some of these were put in earlier before some of the cost, actually, cost estimate came back from the companies. So we just kind of, you know, to make things easy, we leave the, I I kind of have a cutoff date on the requested line, and then I move into the the mayor's budget. And we just never really updated that requested number in some instances. So AJ, the mayor and I kind of worked, we we met and we had a long conversation about these costs and kind of hold the the policies apart and look at the costs. And again, the graph kind of paints a picture, too, in terms of what's been happening. And again, we'll work right to left here, but you can see 18 actual was at 254, 18 budget was at 273. 19, we had actuals of 263. 2019 budget was at 286. So again, we're consistently kind of leaving money on the table. 2020 actual was at 221. We had a budget of 279. Saw an uptick of last year, too. But the more we scrubbed it and looked into it, we realized that this 257 number is probably pretty reasonable based on, A, historical trends, and B, the information that AJ has received back from the insurance companies in terms of their quotes. So we did scrub this pretty closely. We did add a bit of a buffer even within the workers' comp insurance. And even if you look at, you know, through 83121, even though we're showing 257 here, a big chunk of this is up in this property insurance line, that's 54253. I think we had about an $18,000 claim this year on the EMS building. I don't know what happened, if somebody ran into it or whatever, but we're also reimbursed like $17,000 for that cost. So even the year-to-date insurance costs are a little bit inflated just due to that incident because you're going to, you know, get the insurance revenue on the back end, but that goes on to the revenue side of things. So we really kind of dug into this and realized that, you know, we might be leaving some money on the table with this budget. And we spent a lot of time kind of working out a budget that we thought made the most sense, while leaving a bit of a buffer on the workers' comp insurance side of things, even based on the quote that we received. Because sometimes they do a little bit of an annual true-up here and there. So we did leave a buffer on that one, but we still think this is a more reasonable budget compared to what we've seen, you know, historically, based on the the trends that we've seen in the policy documents that we've received. But I don't I don't know if you have anything to add on this either, AJ or not.
No, the only one that I want to quick touch on is our workers' comp. And I think we need to really give credit to the department heads as well as the employees. We've been really attacking the safety side really hard, and our modification factor came in. You want it less than one, and I think we we turned out this year at 0.75, right around that number. So that's a kudos to everybody at the city and working safely. That also allowed us to ratchet that number down. And also, the 155 falls into exactly what Jamin had said with the number being put in before we actually received all of the information from the carrier. So things are looking really good on this front. The incident that was just under 20,000 at the EMS, that was a uninsured motor vehicle that struck the building and caused damage in the bricks. So that's all I have.
Thank you, AJ.
You're welcome.
Again, any comments, questions? Are you none? Jamin, you're a rock star. Everybody is so please, oh, Jean, do you have a comment? I see your mic is on.
No, I was gonna say aye for adjournment when it comes, if it comes.
You what?
I was gonna say aye for adjournment if it comes.
And Jean and I were thinking alike.
I just want to thank Jamin and the mayor and all the department heads of all their work to put into this budget. They said this has been painless because it's so well organized and thoughtful. And so I thank you guys for all your work. Yep, Bill is doing a round of applause. All right, I think that's it. We have our meeting next week, Wednesday. Same time, different channel. I guess Jean or Fred, if there's something that you'd like to do right now, let's, Jamin, you have the final words of wisdom?
I don't. We'll wrap up the rest of the departments and a couple separate funds next week. I'll I'll do some research on the utilities and work with Rodney on that. We'll bring it back next week. So thanks, everyone.
Sounds good.
You can't do that, Greg. You slipped in there before Jean or I have a second.
Go ahead, Jean.
I'm seconding it. I I was just gonna say aye, but I'll second. Good night, everybody.
All in favor, aye. Aye, aye. You guys have a great, first of your evening. Thank you.